Well, you have a different. Different, okay. I was wondering why yours was white. You have a different.
And I'm going to Boston tomorrow to bring her out cow hall, pick her up, take her home.
Yeah, the mics are on.
Drove back from North Carolina. Yes, you guys. And the the gas service in the southeast is a real thing. No, but it took me six tries to find the gas station that had gas.
Were the prices up?
No, they weren't. My wife told me about this, this act before I left. It's called Gas Bunny. And it's traditionally for, if you're, you know, unfamiliar, stop by the cheapest gas around. But in this case, it was where they actually had it.
Where it was.
Yeah, so and it worked. Place of
Yeah, they had it.
They had it.
You know what? I can email it to him. I don't need to give that hard copy. I can email it to him. So don't worry about it. Thank you.
Do they have any particular buildings on the um? Yeah, everybody should wear their mask and let's you know, behind the bus bus and up there. We have not relaxed any of our mask wearing. It's signed everywhere. I think it's more like You know, the people in the effort tonight are listening to the news. I think people are walking around about masks. Totally. Not going to be bored about masks. We're good?
Okay, everybody. Good evening, everybody. It is 7:04 Thursday, March 13th, 2021. The meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization is hereby called to order. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent then known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting such notice in Town Hall and the township's website, by notification to newspapers on December 23rd, 2020 of the annual schedule of 2021, and by providing notice to the township clerk. I'd ask that we all rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Tracy, will you do a roll call, please?
Jomana Cogan.
Will be delayed. He'll be here shortly.
Tracy Capabene here. Andrew Morgan.
Here.
Adesha Nichol.
Yeah.
Michael Caravaglio.
Here.
Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Stephen Weiner.
Here.
Alex McDonald.
Here.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
We start our meetings reading the mission statement of our group. The purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a new district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. Excuse me. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2021 meeting. That's the open session of that meeting. Copies of the minutes of that meeting have been distributed. If you've had any comments or updates or deletions, changes, please let us know. If not, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes. Motion. I have a second, please.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's prove those minutes. Next is public comments. We invite you in the audience, or I don't, are we still doing people remotely?
Yeah, we have three.
Okay. All right. So when invited to speak, please come to the lectern, or when your turn is called remotely, please clearly state your name and address and speak into the microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. If you're going to read from a prepared statement, kindly give a copy or email a copy to the Milburn Short Hill Sid at Tracy@ExploreMilburnShortHills.org. Just to help facilitate an orderly meeting, to permit everyone who wishes to be heard to do so, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Do we want to start online? Start with nobody has their hand raised? Okay, we'll start with anybody in the audience, please.
Vicki Powell, 358 Milburn Avenue, Shala. Great fame event. Too bad it rained. I wish it would, you know, but we're having music on Saturday, supposed to be a great weekend. So that's exciting. Just a couple of things. Wanted to know if the marketing and social media was gonna, who's doing a great job is going to start to ramp up a little bit more. Maybe if we can get an inter turn maybe to can maybe do videos of the five districts, more ramping up at the social media of the promoted posts, maybe do some ads. Come to Milburn. We're open weekends. You know, I don't know, but I think it needs to be a little bit more. Looking forward to hearing what's going on with the website because it's like giving birth. It's taken a long time. So I'm hoping to see some new stuff coming out on that. And my other main concern is, so it looks like, you know, with the flex parking, we don't know what's going to happen. We're voting again next week in the meeting. I wanted to know what the Sid is going to do to maybe help us if this happens. Are they gonna have a marketing plan out to tell people that Milburn's open for business? To try to facilitate this horrendous thing that could potentially be happening in the summer and ruin all our business in August? Because, you know, it's going to be jackhammers. It's not going to be saw cut as people think they it is. It's going to be jackhammers. So I really would hope that you guys take a, not a position, take some initiative to help us merchants that are going to be directly affected in the month of August if this happens and gets voted on to be pushed through. So I really would like to, the marketing department to really help us out because we're going to need it. It's going to be a disaster. Also, if we having sidewalk sales June and July, are we going to start promoting that? Are we going to send an email to the merchants telling them and reminding them that in June, July, the Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, we're allowed to have wares out on the street corners. It would be nice to get a big group to make it like an open air market type of thing. You know, branded a different way if you want to, but it would be nice to try to pull people into coming into town. Oh, and I forgot to ask any word about the gift certificate, the that we were going to have the gift certificate in town with merchant wise gift certificate if we have any updates on that. And I hope we're thinking about fall events because, you know, it's right around the corner and it would be nice to start thinking about that. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Feld from 11 Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I don't know really where to begin. It's not usually that I would be agreeing with Liz Cheney about the importance of the rule of law and our constitutional obligations. The reason I say that it's we've been confirming that there's been no legal opinion received by any attorney regarding the validity of this entity. There's litigation. This afternoon was various document dumps pursuant to Oprah that I received and other people received regarding the costs that have been filed in the litigation. And I really would like to stop back. I don't know this gentleman, but at the last meeting, I asked whether we be asked allowed to speak about the validity of his walk on contract. We were told we would not be able to speak. I find that kind of ironic that there's an ad that's posted about the SS County Board of Commissioners regarding, and they recognize the right of people to speak prior to official action. Yesterday, I appeared in front of the local finance board before every finance application, they asked with a simple question. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on those issues? That did not happen. There's really serious questions about the validity of this gentleman's general retention. The validity of this organization. As to documents Oprah, I think you have to ask the BA whether a copy of the new civil rights resolution policy has been distributed to each of these members. In addition, whether each of these members have filed their ethics finance disclosure statements. Also, it's outrageous. Today is what, May 13th? We still not receive a copy of the, this gentleman's contract. Under Oprah, that document must be immediately producible. What about that? Also, at the last meeting, the CC meeting about the budget, there's a question about the increase of this gentleman's. I'm not trying to be, I'm not insulting you, that his salary increased $20,000 of the prior person. Under budget law, there was a question whether you had to change your budget to reflect that item increase. It didn't happen. Because it's more than 10%, I think the budget law required you to go renotice it. It did not happen. There's a series of pattern of actions that I am discovering. It's only by pure fluke that I'm here. Because of what you treated to some of the people in the community, I came involved. There's been no feasibility study here. And one thing is, the chairperson, we found since the last meeting, he's also an invisible attorney for Bloomfield. And there's questions they have a Sid whether we are like theirs.
Nancy Stone, 266 Essex Street, Milburn, New Jersey. Specifically, you're a newbie. You haven't introduced yourself to the community yet, but I'm Nancy Stone. I have a business in town almost 30 years. I was the treasurer of the previous DMDA that dissolved because I see Tara's on the Zoom because Tara was so adamantly opposed to Gillian's $70,000 salary and outraged by that salary. And here, you clearly didn't do your due diligence about what's going on in this community about the special improvement district. And at least we had Greenbaum Row representing us, which was a town, you know, top law firm. Because that's the way we rolled, representing us and finding out about the buy-in. There was no buy-in, no feasibility study. I don't understand how they can walk on a budget that was absolutely unacceptable in the first Sid, which is why it dissolved with a $70,000 executive director that did a very good job with a previous president sitting right here. Vicki Powell, who was the president at the time, and handed it over to DJ. It is outrageous that we have taken taxpayer, and I'm also a resident, that we have taken taxpayer dollars to fund this during a pandemic when clearly Mr. Heller just bought the carry the Charlie Brown building without the Sid. So really interesting that all of this happened while we didn't have a Sid. And now are you going to take credit for the fact that he bought the building now? Because we have a Sid that had nothing to do with it? I wait to see what happens with that. With that said, you really needed to do your due diligence. Because if you had any credibility, you wouldn't accept the job with an executive director that was here for 30 days. So clearly you didn't do your due diligence. I have 12 seconds. I'm going to take advantage of reference to the the events. I don't understand how you can continue. And Tara, you're listening clearly, which I'm glad, how you can continue to endorse an organization that you were so adamantly against for being unproductive. You can do all these little so-called events and it's 50% of the budget is going towards administrative expenses, which is what you were against. And now you're the mayor in charge and you're condoning this behavior now, which is opposite of everything that you fought when you were on this side of the fence.
Good evening. Dean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. I'm going to read mostly a prepared statement. I sent an email on May 5th to Steve Grillo. I guess that's who you are, asking about the fame event that was opened up to the community and nonprofits to participate in. I asked about the Facebook group called Happy Milburn and wondered if it would be okay for other Milburn Facebook groups to be included. He responded. He introduced himself and I'm in receipt of your email. I'd like to explain the format of the event. The Community Zone will host tables from 12 to 2 and is designed for community and nonprofit groups focused on the positive and collaborative growth of Milburn. The groups that have signed on are participating to advance this goal. I encourage you to attend. So I replied, I do not understand. I'm confused by your definition of who is welcome to be a part of this event. In light of what transpired at the May 4th Township Committee Public Meeting and the May 5th Local Planning Board Meeting, how does a public entity funded with taxpayer trust fund monies and using public land and space decide what community and nonprofit groups advocate positive and collaborative growth of Milburn? Isn't that constitutionally prohibited free speech, content discrimination? Steve replied, as you have brought up a question of free speech interpretations and legalities, I will refer your inquiry to the Sid's attorney. I consider this matter closed as far as the Sid goes in discussion. So he, I then suggested he also asked about the validity of the Sid and his retention agreement under state laws. He replied again on May 7th, I spoke with our attorney, Ryan Cooper, on the questions you had concerning the fame event, the validity of the bid and the validity of my hiring as ED. These were asked by email on May 6th, and he said, the questions regarding the fame event, this is what the attorney said, is hypothetical since no group requesting participation was turned away and planning for the event is now complete. Didn't answer my question. Therefore, there is no question to address. As for the questions regarding the Sid and your retention, I'm not aware of any written opinions by counsel on these subjects. I thought that was a significant comment. Hence, some of the comments that Mr. Feld made, I concur with. I conclude that not everyone in the community is in fact welcome to participate in events sponsored by the Sid, but only those who, in the eyes of the Sid gods, whatever, advocate positive and collaborative growth of Milburn. I think this is wrong. I think everyone should be welcome. If it's on, being funded by taxpayers, on taxpayer properties, there should be no limitations as to who participates.
Was there someone who was turned away?
I didn't, I did not say that.
No, I'm asking the question.
I don't know. You'd have to ask the people who organized it. Secondly, there are no written legal opinions and on the retention agreement, this also to me seems like it means you've got to take a pause. I'd also like to ask, since you are the municipal attorney in Bloomfield, is there an elected or appointed Sid board in that township? And I'd also like to know if the ethics financial disclosure statements are available for public perusal. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then we're going to general updates. If we're, if we're going to go through my, my CV, I was also a basketball coach with the rec department and I was on the Milburn Soccer Club. You forgot to include those as well, if that's relevant to whatever discussion we're having. Okay, we have proposed board meeting schedule updates. Looking to change the start time of our meetings from 7:00 to 6:30. Particularly starting with the June 17th meeting. I think we had some questions now that people are back to commuting, if that was going to be a problem or not. But if not, just to get us started a little earlier, if that's available, if that's okay for everybody. Anybody have anything to say?
Fine.
Any issue? Richard, I know you're a computer. Is that an issue?
It is an issue, but I can find a way around it if everybody else is okay with it. You know, whatever.
Well, why don't we just try that for June?
Try for June.
Maybe we can relook at it if I have trouble getting.
Accordingly.
Yeah.
And.
We'll try it. We'll try it.
All right. So we will notice that, but I could just state it here since we're in the public record. We will be moving the, well, hold on, let's go to the next part. We were talking about possibly moving the date, changing the date of the June 17th meeting. That's
It's June 10th.
I'm sorry, June. The June 10th meeting?
It was the June 10th meeting. Moved to the 17th.
Moved to the 17th. All right. Does anybody have any conflicts with the 17th? The 19th would be the holiday.
I'm good.
So I, I spoke incorrectly. It's currently scheduled for the June 10th. We would move it one week to the 17th at 6:30. Anybody have any conflicts with that?
I'm good.
Okay. I had spoken to one of the other board, to Jomana, who's not here and about potential change and she would support it as well as I do because there is some conflicts on the 10th, some graduations, private school graduations are that evening. So if at all possible to move it to the 17th.
So we'll do a public notice to advertise that the meeting's being changed to June 17th at 6:30 at Milburn Town Hall in this room. Just one item that popped up this morning, kind of a general update. I was able to participate in a call today with the folks organizing toward the Milburn, which if you don't know, that is a community bike ride started last year, I think. It's scheduled for September 12th. And it'll be traveling through different parts of town, including not just the downtown, but some of the other districts. I know for sure it'll go up to Chatham Road. It goes down by the park and they would like to have us involved to the extent that maybe we can piggyback and events. It'll be in the morning on the 12th. There will be hopefully a lot of people around and we can brainstorm to get something going on that. Some of the things that were talked about was coffee trucks, bakery carts, something like that, maybe something even bigger than that, maybe promoting. You know, do some advertising in advance. Again, I'm just spitballing up here, but maybe we could refer this to the Planning and Events Committee since we have some time. But it is on September 12th. So I just wanted to bring that up that that came up today. Next.
Do they have a tentative time for that event? Is it?
10 a.m., I think.
10 a.m.
I think it's 10.
It's various times. There's three rides.
Right.
A 12 mile, seven mile, two mile. And the, the 12 mile starts, I believe it's at
Okay.
9:00, okay. So if we could Jomana, Nadeja, and Jackie, maybe we could add that to the Planning and Events idea, Committee thinking. Excuse me. Updates from Township Committee Meeting, Mr. Wasserman.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few, a couple of comments and I also want to, want to speak to Vicki Powell's questions about flex parking. First thing I want, I want, as everybody knows, the, the budget was passed by the Township Committee unanimously and with full support. So I just wanted to make, make that clear. And, and there's a lot of support for the work that we're doing. Also, I also want to mention that speaking to internships, you know, that how that could help us. Mr. Grillo and I have a meeting tomorrow morning with, with the representative from Milburn High School with one of the teachers and we're going to be looking at, at a program that they're, that they have with eight students that, and we're going to see if we can work with them and, and, you know, potentially help these kids get, you know, job training, internships. You know, we're, this is our initial meeting, but it could be a really great thing that, that we do. And especially with our relationship with the business community, it could be something that we can, you know, institute and grow with. Other than that, at the last TC meeting, I sponsored an ordinance updating, it was updating our current zoning in many of our districts. It's ordinance number 2577 dash 21. So we, so it was introduced and it basically would update a lot of the permitted uses and and hopefully it would, it would, you know, it basically would lower a lot of barriers that exist in town for allowing different businesses into, you know, into doing business in our township. And so I'm very excited about that because I think there's a lot of potential to bring in really great businesses without all to bring in really great businesses without all the curtain, you know, current red tape. So that's something I'm working on. And that's, you know, and, and so that's basically the update for, update on that. In terms of flex parking, you know, the TC is taking this up, we're really considering it in terms of, in terms of, you know, long-term viability. And I think that there, you know, we're going to make a decision on it in the next meeting. I've said, you know, publicly that there has to be, you know, project manager, there has to be great communication, there has to be, you know, a very really great working relationship with our, our local businesses. I, I, I understand exactly, you know, your concern and I share your concern. And all I can tell you is that when it's discussed, I'm going to just make sure that, you know, the concerns are addressed and that we can't do this without a really great working plan. So I don't know, you know, what's going to happen, but I will tell you that I'll make sure that that is communicated clearly and and I, I can't, I would only support a plan that, that is a detailed plan with a project manager with great communication. And I can just pledge to you that I'll try to do all those things and I'll try to make sure the communication is great. So I just wanted to mention that.
Richard, can I, before you get off flex parking, should I just ask, and it's really my own ignorance on it. Is, is there a you said there's going to be something voted on, is it to go forward and explore, get an engineering plan or like to start the next week?
Well, actually, Alex, do you want to speak to?
Yeah, I could speak to, to, to the timing, how it would work. It's really, I think the committee is going to have, have a conversation about whether they want to pursue bids to do the work. And so should they decide that they do want to pursue bids to do the work, then there's a lot of other things that need to fall into place. You know, the funding, the, the bid specifications, the going out the bid, receiving the bid, awarding the bid and getting it done. That's, I think that's where, right now, it's just, do we, I think the committee's deciding, go forward or not.
And just so we're all on the same page, is it to return to what was there prior to the flex parking being put in or something a little bit different?
Well, I think to just to.
So, um, just, just to be clear, it is not, when you say return to the way it was before flex parking.
Restoring the lane of traffic?
No, it is not. It is, it is removing flex parking, putting in curb parking. And, and traditional, you know, curbed, you know, parallel parking.
Up to where the bollards are.
Correct. Yeah, you can use that line of bollards as your, as your, as your, yep.
Richard, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, I just wanted to get, make sure I was on the right page with that.
Yeah, so, so that's, so that'll be, that'll come up at the next meeting and I will make sure that the bit, that the concerns from the business community are heard. And, you know, I don't know exactly what, you know, I'm not sure what decision is going to be made yet, but it's definitely going to be considered and you know, so that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, and, and I think just, I, I think everybody agrees with what Vicky said, we, we need to. I, I don't know what the committee is going to do on this or how, what the timing will be, but Vicky's absolutely right that whatever we have to do to minimize interruption inconvenience, we have to do it.
Perry Mercer could not get on the Zoom to the public comment, she has a statement, just to let you know.
So I, I think that's of paramount importance.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We, we don't want to, we don't have to, you know, relitigate the past, but let's.
I, I, I agree with you, I know.
Yeah.
I know it was very disruptive when it was installed and, and we don't want to make the same mistakes, you know.
Yes, I think we can, we, we've, we could learn, we've learned and.
And it has to be, you know, the devil's in the details, it has to be done right and I, you know, I'm the first to tell you that.
Any other updates, Richard?
Uh, no, that's, those are the main updates, I'm, I'm really hopeful that our zoning update with ordinance twenty-five seventy-seven dash twenty-one passes, and that, that would, I guess that would happen by June first.
And does that give some more flexibility, I think, like in the B two and the zones?
The B two, the B three, and it, and it really addresses more, more permitted uses. It makes it, you know, it makes entryway into the township a little, a little easier and a little more manageable. But I will tell you, you know, the other thing that's in the, in this ordinance, it also raises some of the standards in, in terms of you know, raises some of the standards in terms of lighting, garbage maintenance, you know, so we're also making sure that we, that while new businesses are going to be coming, well, maybe coming in, we're going to make sure that they're good neighbors and we're going to make sure that we do our part to make sure that we have no, you know, no problems with, with noise, lighting, garbage, road abatement, you know, we're going to, we really want to raise the standard on those items also.
Just to piggyback on, there, there are, there is a document, a frequently asked questions on the website about the ordinance in case people are interested.
Okay, we're moving along to subcommittee updates, starting with our planning and events and first of all, if I could just give a general thank you to everybody who got the Fame Festival off and running, you cannot control the weather, I think we had people out there. We did take advantage of the inside space at in Bauer Center and I, some of those classes were very well attended, I know the Artvino classes were fairly well attended, so we took our lemons and made some lemonade, which was good, so I think that's the first item here, Fame Festival report. Mr. Grillo, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, I wasn't the first one to welcome you tonight, but welcome.
With the Chairman's permission, there, there was an individual here earlier, right, quite a loud cellphone chime for their text messages, I think that individual has subsequently left, but of course, common courtesy would dictate that at a public meeting, everyone should just keep their cellphone silenced, so just, I don't know if you can hear it behind the plexiglass. So in, in terms of the Fame Festival, first off, thank you to the committee. You began working on that before I was brought on, so I had the luxury of filling it at the very last moment, I got to pinch it in the bottom of the ninth and take some of the heroics. But it was a great event put on by a number of wonderful members of the community and if you'll bear with me, I'd like to read off the, the groups that participated. Kika Stretch Studio, the Bhakti Barn Yoga, Short Hills Club Pilates and Pure Bar provided free exercise classes, which were quite well attended and I hope that folks go out and utilize those, those groups later on in their personal lives. Secondarily, Art of Vino did three different classes for Mother's Day painting programs, which were very well attended, so thank you to them. Over a dozen not-for-profit and community groups participated in the Community Zone Program, which was indoors at the Bauer Center due to quite the deluge of rain, so and I want to thank DPW and Recreation for being exceptionally flexible and working with us and allowing us to utilize that space on short notice. We also did have some family entertainment and then we also were scheduled to have some music that evening, obviously the weather required us to change that and Jackie will be speaking on the schedule momentarily. And so, you know, I think the takeaway for me, yes, the, the foot traffic was lower than we had hoped due to the, the significant weather, but we did have over a hundred and fifty folks that were, we'll call individually touched, those are people coming up to the welcome tent, coming to classes and overall, I think that was a great success, given the weather conditions and being the day before holiday. And the, the overwhelming majority of those folks had never interacted with Explore Melbourne before. And that to me is the key takeaway in terms of bid administration and bid operations. The marketing was very strong, the social media presence was strong and to have a lot of folks who had never heard of this program before be engaged in a really positive manner, I thought was really terrific. So, you know, that, that the takeaway was, was really positive and so I'm very happy with the event and I thank all of those that were involved.
And we did have some prizes.
We did have some prizes, we're giving away some of those prizes already, we had some folks coming in today to pick up their, their rewards, so I, I, I'm sorry, I'm remiss, seventeen businesses also did promotions during the, the event, so if you, if you went in and you mentioned you, the business and the event, you were able to get discounted gifts and such, so overall, I think the engagement across the board was very robust.
Thank you. Okay, live music updates because Jackie has control and power over the weather.
So, so yes, we made the decision. Thank you, everyone. We made the decision that it was best in the interest of the community to postpone and reschedule our music events and due to some scheduling conflicts, we were able to also provide music on Friday evening. So on Friday evening, we'll have poet section six to eight PM on the Main Street closure and then Saturday we'll have our Music Palooza, as I've been calling it to my friends and anybody that'll listen, so starting with Big Romance from four to five thirty, five thirty to seven thirty is Last Exit and Midnight Sun is seven thirty to nine and that will be on the main in Melbourne, the Taylor Park side from four to five thirty. To also take advantage of our, our merchants and some shoppers during the late afternoon. Anybody who's grabbing a late snack perhaps or a, a late lunch or an early dinner. Lot one, which is the, the lot next, across from Fiama where Karamia has their outpost, that will be the five thirty to seven thirty and then seven thirty to nine will be at, on Melbourne Avenue. Continuing with our, what I'll call our summer concert series on May twenty-first from six to eight, we'll have Mrs. Eller and the Fellers up at Boxcar. Six four, which is Fri- Friday evening, six thirty to ten is the Red Light Band. That will be downtown and then on six twelve, we have Last Exit performing up by Boxcar. We will, we are looking at some programming also up on Upper Melbourne Avenue for six twenty-five or seven nine, we're just kind of playing through the schedule and seeing what, what happens, also looking at some at, at that whole block area to see what's best because there really isn't a municipal spot up there that's conducive, but we're, we're, we're going to be creative and we're working through it. So thank you, please come, please come enjoy some live music, the weather's supposed to be great this weekend. Made to order and we welcome your, your attendance and participation. There will also be another community event that the Cultural Engagement Diversity and Arts Committee will be sponsoring with our, our dear friends of the Paper Mill. That will be Sunday, June twenty-seventh. It'll be Paper Mill in the park, it'll be the kickoff event of our, what we're going to call our CETA Sundays. This will be held from one to two thirty, we'll be using the Rex Band Shell. It'll be interactive, there'll be show tunes, this will be in Taylor Park. More information certainly to follow, please follow us on social media. We are, the, the Explore Melbourne Short Hills will be assisting CETA, which is a recognized township group to make sure that residents and pushing it out, it's a community event. And we're very excited about it, Paper Mill is beginning to restore the light in the building and the light, so they, they will have a robust program moving forward, so we, we welcome them, so thank you. If anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me, always happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. No questions, we'll move on to marketing, Tracy and Jamana, could update us on that, please?
Okay, I'll start with the update and I know Vicky had asked about the website, so a lot of work has been going on behind the scenes, it's coming along really well, the design is finalized, we actually just provided all of the final content today, we have a couple of photographers lined up, we really want to have some great quality photos from throughout the five districts and really throughout town, including green spaces, you know, we really want to showcase what a great draw all of Melbourne Short Hills is, so we're super excited, we're targeting a launch in, in June, we are also spending some time, we've been looking at a lot of different Sid and Destination websites to also determine the best format for our directory, because obviously that's going to be a central part of the website, it's going to be making it easy for people to find a business, a restaurant, you know, another service and encourage them again, and this will be really reaching out to both residents and visitors, it's really targeted towards both audiences, so more to come, we will definitely want to have a couple of people you know, during a kind of final testing phase, explore it, so Vicky, I would like, love if you or anybody else would like to be one of those folks, please let me know. Happy to share that and then I'll just mention on the social media, um, we've been all putting a lot of focus on that, we really were able to leverage really well some of the recent promotions, the gems and the theme, we've had some really nice engagement and kind of ramping up the highlighting of different business categories in the different districts, I know this is something that Steve is one, one of the top things on his list is thinking about our marketing plan, including social media and some possible resources for that, so I know he's hoping to reconvene our marketing committee within the next couple of weeks. Jamana, do you have?
I don't, no, I don't really have anything to add, but I think like, you know, Tracy said, we're we're setting a, a meeting in the week after next to, to get together as a marketing committee and, and to discuss some of those issues, I'm sure, I guess you're talking about the website and social media, but nothing else really.
Questions from anybody?
I don't know if I, I heard, did you, is there a launch date for the website?
We said, we're hoping for early June. Yeah, yeah, Jamana is just mentioning.
And I was just, just to mention that we also started, I, I don't know how many we put out, two or three community newsletters to a group of seven hundred, I think, a growing group. Growing group, growing group of, yeah, of email recipients of the community newsletter, separate from the ones that we sent out to the merchants, yeah.
That's great, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to Business Development Advocacy Groups, first, we have Community Focus Groups. I think that's back to you.
Yeah, so I'll just talk a little bit and I know Steve will jump in, so we've been meeting monthly the Business Development and Advocacy Group and one, one of the things that we're, we're working on, it's really in, at the final edit stage, is a, is basically a pitch book, a, a manual, if you will, for new, potential new businesses, where, what they need, the resources that are available to them, the kinds of where they need to go, how they need to navigate. So that's, that's in, that was something that was started and, and I'm grateful that Steve is really stepped up and, and take ownership of it, thank you to Tracy for the, some of the pictures and the content with Mr. Hubble, I think, right, am I pronouncing his name correctly? That's been supplying the photography, so we're, we're, we're coming along nicely on that. And then what, do you want to talk about these focus groups or should I or, yeah, okay, so also, thank you, Tracy, we will be engaging in some focus groups to utilizing two residents, both Deb Fox and Alan Steinberg and really having not a survey, but a, a honed focus group with both merchants as well as landlords, particularly in our outlier districts outside of the downtown. And we think that'll happen sometime mid-June, I believe, is what it's, to really look at both quantitative as well as qualitative research in the areas of the downtown and really drill down a little bit more succinctly in terms of what the needs are, so I look forward to under Steve's leadership and we'll be moving that along as well. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Steve, you wanted to jump in?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The Business Success Kit that Jackie mentioned is a promotional document, I was given the skeleton of from my predecessor and then we put together pretty much a final draft, I'm going to share it with the marketing team now that we're ready to go. And then we do have a meeting later this month with the Business Advocacy Committee. Once everyone signs off, I think we're ready to proceed using that as a as a marketing tool, not only for existing businesses so that we can provide necessary information for day-to-day operations. Especially at the municipal level, how do you get your recycling picked up and what are the street cleaning rules and tree pit rules and all those kinds of things? But also is a good tool when people do engage us, and I will tell you that I've only been here, I think, nine days now, nine business days, but I have had stakeholder meetings with probably the better part of twenty businesses so far. And the questions tend to be repetitive, and I've I've been doing bid work for ten years and they often are repetitive, it's the same questions and concerns, and so if you can codify that and provide a written document, it often makes businesses' lives much easier. Speaking of which, there is a new program that has come out through the latest federal funding. It's called the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, and it is for restaurants, breweries, bars, bakeries, et cetera. And so I put together a fact sheet on that, all of you actually have it in your packets. Thank you to to the chairman especially, who reviewed that and gave some excellent feedback. I've been distributing that, not only, we did a mailing to all of our, the folks on our mailing list, we put it on our social media this morning. Thank you to Tracy for a very nice post. I've also been going door to door and meeting with restaurant owners and explaining the program to them. As of today, I have met with thirty-eight out of forty-two eligible businesses face to face. So, you know, I've been hitting the pavement, meeting folks, obviously, they are all very much interested in some free federal money to support their businesses, it's pretty flexible. I do encourage folks, if you are listening in the public or listening on a recording here. It is a very, very tight turnaround. Just to explain the scope, if you don't mind, I was on a call today with the SBA Administrator, that's the entity that's doing this work, just like with the PPP. The fund is twenty-eight point six billion with a B. The first twenty-one days have been dedicated to MWBE, that's Minority Women Businesses, as well as businesses in underserved economic areas. They received two hundred and sixty-five thousand applications in the first week. And so that is an allocation of sixty-five billion dollars, obviously, that is three times what they have in the fund. And so not everyone is going to get a hundred percent of their request. But we definitely want to encourage Melbourne businesses to be very quick about this. I did encounter two or three businesses that have already started the process. But I provided in that document, the login portal, the phone number for information at SBA in Newark. My contact information, as well as all the documents that you'll need to submit. So hopefully, you know, some of the businesses here in town will be able to benefit from this program. I should say restaurants and bars as well. And that is it for my report, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Steve, that's very, very helpful, I appreciate two-sided, one-page is manageable for everybody, so, thank you.
Usually get about thirty seconds when you walk into a restaurant, want to talk to somebody, you gotta be quick.
Okay. So that's you've Business Success and US SBA Restaurant. Solar Trees, Richard.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to keep this more as a discussion. Sorry, sorry. I I just wanted to keep this more of a discussion because, you know, I I think part of our mission is to do streetscaping and lighting. And, you know, we've had conversations and 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 again, the Solar Trees was just is a project I'm working on, you know, with the township. And this would be something that that we would piggyback, but I, but again, talking to, you know, our our members. You know, I think that there was some hesitancy that maybe, that maybe there was, you know, a different plan or or something else that we could do. So, you know, again, I I would only, you know, I only wanted to recommend it because I think it's, you know, it's a great thing to to do. And the township is going to be, is is doing it, but I just thought that might be something we wanted to participate in. But I just thought I would throw it out there in terms of your feedback. And and see what what your sentiment was, and again, I'm not, you know, tied to it, tied to it per se, I only want to do it if 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 we think it's a great idea as a whole.
So did the town issue the bid yet, or the RFP, not yet?
Not not yet.
That was the plan.
Yeah, that that is the plan. Yeah, that is a plan, and that'll be, that'll be happening by yeah, by next Thursday, so, so, yeah, we're going to be doing that. So this is, you know, so this is, this is where we're at. But again, you know, I've discussed it with Mr. Grillo, and again, there's different things that we can do down the road, it doesn't have to be this project, but I just, you know, I brought it, it's like, if anybody, if anybody has a great idea, you bring it forward. But but again, you know, I just wanted to know your feedback, sentiment, what what the board was thinking.
I could share a thought. I mean, thank you for bringing it to us, and it's good to know the ideas that are going on, and I mean, certainly, there's a lot of efforts that are intertwined, all with the common goal of you know, boosting our businesses and our environment, so. The idea of having, you know, some beauty and nature and a consistent look around different parts of town seems really positive. I think I still feel similar to some of the questions at the last meeting, and especially with Steve being here. And things like our focus groups coming up and really talking with the businesses. My personal feeling is, in terms of the Cids involvement would be, I really want to understand a lot more of what things are most important for the business and our budget. You know, that we do have that goes towards, you know, streetscape or signage and things like that. Get thoughts, and also especially from Steve with his expertise, and again, with the input from the businesses, what would give us the biggest bang for the buck? And be the hardest hitting, so to me, yeah, I wouldn't feel ready to make a decision on that myself personally, because I'd want to understand a lot more the learnings we're going to be getting in the next couple of months of what's most important to the businesses, and then really prioritize our efforts, but it does seem like a nice initiative overall.
I mean, I guess I wonder if, do we need a subcommittee or a group to focus on like a plan, they solicit the feedback of businesses? See if trees may be part of the answer, or if it's seeding or raised bed flowers or different lighting in different areas, I mean, I I guess it does seem like we would need feedback from businesses and then sort of a a plan, a multi-year plan of some type.
I mean, hopefully, part of the market research, and as Jackie mentioned, the two people who volunteered that you mentioned, Deb Fox is professional longtime qualitative researcher, and Alan Steinberg has a lot of experience on the quantitative front, so I would hope we're going to get some learning.
Yeah, I get, you know, if the town proceeds, I mean, I do like the ideas around maybe buying some very fancy, nice plaques that either either, you know, the Explorer Melbourne Short Hills, that might bring the continuity that we're looking for as well.
There certainly is a branding, you know, I'll also mention there, the way the trees are set up, and again, just so everybody knows, the trees are right outside, we have a mock-up of two trees. And part of our thinking was also to, you know, I, there was some feedback that the lighting wasn't bright enough, and I think we're addressing that, we're going to tweak that to make sure that the lighting is a little brighter. But there's also branding opportunity on the base of the trees where it could, you know, you know, that that could be a nice branding opportunity also as we go forward. But, you know, again, we could revisit this later, you know, maybe after our focus groups and, you know, I don't think it's off the table to any extent.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman? So I think there's, in terms of our streetscaping budget, we should consider that there really are two categories, right, there's the capital side of it, and I would consider these trees to be capital, it's a loose term, but I I think you get my point. But then there's also the maintenance part of it, right, and so if you go up by Jumana's business. The tree pits are very different than the tree pits and swales on this side of Main Street. And so same thing on Morris Turnpike, there's definitely an opportunity to do some landscape improvements there that I would not consider necessarily capital. But I think in terms of our budget, we we need to assess those. But furthermore, and I've had this conversation with a number of you. Jumana and and Tracy and I are working actively on our branding program. We don't have street pole banners, which of course are very typical, we don't have welcome signs to each of the five districts, I think that's a critical component of visual placemaking that we need to examine, I don't foresee that being a particularly long process. I think that's probably something that we could accomplish in the next forty-five to sixty days. And so once we have a branding program in place, and we know what our color coding will look like per district, we know what some of the expectations will be. Then I think the question to Committee Member Wasserman's point is, is I think it'll be easier for us to look at a branding program for other things such as the trees. So let us get to point A, which is determining the basics of the branding, I foresee that will be done very soon. And then we can start thinking about, not only on the the potential of purchasing or sponsoring trees, but a whole variety of other things throughout town, because once we have that system in place, we then just replicate it going forward, it's a bit like the Nike swoosh, you don't have to reinvent the swoosh, you just change the sneaker, so same concept.
Think that's a good idea, I thank you, Richard. Anybody else have any comments? All right, so it sounds like we're going to as lawyers sometimes say, take it under advisement a little bit, and maybe check in with some of our constituent businesses and really the focus groups and evaluate where we're going with this, but I think to Rich, to Richard's point, you're right, it's it's a good idea. It's important that when we have good ideas, we bring them to the table, if it's not today, maybe it's next week, maybe it's, you know, some later time, but I I think it's important. Anything else under business development and advocacy? Okay, if not, Stephen will move on to you and the expense review.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, Richard, thank you, I'm super happy our budget was approved and that that would be a nice. What did I say? I said budget. Yeah, so that that'll be.
We're not responsible for the electric bill, are we?
There we go. So, as posted on our website, these are the expenses from April sixth through May tenth. And we did have a total number of expenses, eight thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, sixty cents. A lot, a lot more events related expenses. It's can marketing with respect to marketing consulting services were the three largest expenses, and that's that's root, that's fairly routine. And then and then the rest were really just to support our activities and and events. Because we've held held several of them. I'm just reading now, and and a little bit for office supplies, but the checking account balance as of May tenth was thirty thousand dollars, five hundred and five dollars, seventy-six cents. So, looking forward to the infusion from the rest of the budget now that it's been approved. So that's it, I don't know if anyone has any questions or thank you.
Board comments, do you guys have any comments, anything that hasn't been covered that'd like to cover?
I just want to make one comment.
Sorry.
I just want to express my gratitude for Mr. Grillo and his he didn't miss a beat, he actually, he attended a couple of Zoom calls prior and just jumped right in, and I'll speak for myself, but I I I think the rest of the board members will share my sentiment that we're grateful you're here. And we look forward to your leadership. And I I think you've gotten a sense, we have a tremendous amount of work to do. We're all engaged, we're all involved, and we're excited, so, thank you from the from the bottom of my heart.
Can I, as long as, as long as the forum mayor starts, I can't help myself, I also want to wel- welcome Mr. Grillo, better known as Steve. You know, you know, he's, he he has surpassed our, you know, our initial expectations, he you you did the right thing, you got out of the office, you you knocked on doors, you're telling people who we are, you're facilitating SBA loans to our businesses. And, you know, this is exactly what we're here for, and and we'll hopefully we can get some of that grant money into some of our restaurants, and that would be amazing. I I also want to welcome our attorneys, our new attorneys, they've been, they've been really help helpful in terms of, you know, helping us with our mission. And and they're excellent, and if if anybody has a legal question about about our work, you know, Mr. Cooper is here to to help us, and I want to welcome them and thank them for their service.
Have a quick, yeah, just, there was a question earlier about the gift certificate, the status of the gift certificate project. We do have a copy of the agreement that was reviewed by council, and now we're just reviewing, so we're looking at the contract. Hopefully that will be able to turn that around very quickly.
What else on this side of the ledger?
I I love that I saw him walking up and down, you know, street, visiting businesses, it's exactly what we needed. I think, and so far, I think, like, to echo what Jackie said, he just kind of hit the ground running. And we're, I'm very excited to see what's coming next.
I think Andrew Morgan, is he raising his hand?
But you might not be able to notice, but Andrew has the logo behind him.
Waiting for some Marla on that one, I have no artistic ability, Marla. Marla just did what I asked her to do, so that one, everybody, I encourage you, they're cool logos, put them, put them on your Zoom, it's good.
Okay, well, I I too wanted to welcome Steve and and really getting to know you a little better on Saturday was very insightful, and I think we could all see, and hopefully the businesses and the rest of the public can see that this is a person with some depth and some experience and some vision that I think's really going to help us, and not to give Steve all the the credit, but all of you who are here. You're all working, hardworking people, dedicated people. Saturday was a crappy day, and you were, you were out there, and I I I think it's a testament to the time and effort that everybody wants to put into this to see our businesses succeed, and some of it is your own businesses, and and it's really a collective effort to see the entire community really raised up to the level, not that it's at a bad level, but to the level we think it should be, which could be even better than it is, and I and I really appreciate that, and I think it's you all, you know, you should all have some satisfaction in the work that that we're doing here, so. I think it's, it's certainly appreciated by me for what that's worth. Anybody else, any comments? And thank you to our attorneys, the attorneys, you know, we're always off in a dark corner somewhere, people are, you know.
Isn't there some rule, attorneys can't thank other attorneys, it's just, it's just obnoxious, isn't it? I'm married to one, I'm allowed to say that, it's okay.
It's like the Academy Awards, you know, you could just pass pass awards back and forth, now, thank you both, you've been, again, talk about hitting the ground running, Steve, you certainly have Ray and Ryan, you certainly have and are are helping us, and listen, we we don't have all the answers, and we look to you guys for your professional support, so thank you very much.
I have one other thing, I I'd also like to thank Marla Itskin for her
Please, I'm sorry, she's not in front of my face.
I know, exactly, and I I don't see her on the, she's on, okay, Marla, you're on mute, or you're on invisible. Okay, so, and I want to thank Marla for her hard work.
Yeah, and she was out there in the, in the rain.
The rain, right, and she's, she's been, she's been with us from the beginning, so, thank you for, thank you for all you do. Did you want to say anything, Andrew, I I can't see.
I I honestly, I think I would just be repeating most of what you folks said. Everybody, especially, like, if I could single out Tracy, I know Tracy does a ton of work, and I see emails coming, and I just know behind the scenes, she's really making a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff tick, and just appreciate Steve's ability and thick skin, so I'm glad that he's the guy, and looking forward to see what comes next.
Give me about one thank you for Crazy Stan, what was it there?
Crazy Kevin, crazy Kevin.
He was, he was all over.
Here, here's a fun fact we got from Crazy Kevin, our very own Marla.
Here, here's a fun fact we got from Crazy Kevin, our very own Marla can juggle. Learned that, so. All right. Anybody else, all right, just a. I guess, just a reminder, next meeting will be, well, we will notice it, I just, I was writing myself a note to email you tomorrow. But it'll be June seventeenth, change date, June seventeenth at six thirty PM. I think that's it, if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Okay, good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.